That's there.
Yes.
Cause downstairs.
Cause downstairs, I don't see it.
Yes.
No, you have to say.
It's like.
Service balance.
Yeah.
My onyx forty-five thousand.
Nice.
Positional set. Yeah. You're sorry.
No, no worries.
No, no, it's nice.
Hey, they were in plan.
This. So it's more for everybody.
Everything else.
Back on, you know that rain.
They threw actually had heat.
Oh, here it is. Then is the endless for tonight.
Yeah.
And my screen. You don't think of you.
So, Jeremy.
No.
See, look, there's been. So, yeah. So, 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 so.
You have to be a week.
It repairs. What's that?
I'm going to need to end it.
Like, say, yeah.
I may.
Okay.
And it's. I've.
For me, she's in it so we have lots of energy, right?
So.
I got it.
Is that it?
Well, it's solved. Yeah. Yeah. I'll write a description tomorrow. Yeah, 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 some, yeah, just, just take out the arm part. We need to.
Oh, no.
Get our pass.
I'm not talking about.
Yeah, I don't.
No.
No.
Oh.
Striling, a lot of windows open.
Well.
But that's your.
Oh.
He won't join us outside.
I know. There are a lot of zooms probably today.
Oh, yeah, I think this zoom is gonna catch on.
You're seeing more zooms than futures.
Actually, he's already, uh, everybody's in trail season. Yeah, actually, it wasn't me on Tuesday either. I was in a chat.
Oh.
I was taking my place. Oh, girl. I did too. I, I don't follow up on any decisions of mates. Great.
Wait, how are we? I said, I thought. Maybe she was. Which one? Yeah. You think so? Yeah, that's a, that's a. Yeah, well, that's just a, I'm sort of just. He's gonna, he's gonna meet. You know, I just saw Region fifteen five-year capital plan. It was a fifteen-year castle plan. I'm like, oh, that is impressive.
We actually, a couple of a six-plus section. Yeah, I, I, I'll spoil the surprise. There's a couple of the six plus. Mile markers out there, so, yeah.
Maybe fifteen.
Are you good? Friends for lots of stuff's happened.
There's thirteen, fourteen, fifteens, again, big players.
This is. And it's why I got extra reef. Got an extra reef?
No, it's still not, yes.
It's big.
No. But there's like a strong secondary market.
Yes, there, the strong sec- scoutman, yes.
And there's she's.
I do, you're small.
They speak to you.
I just, no.
Or I was hurt.
I was not sure. She's somehow saw.
She's saying something.
Yes. Long, such. I mean, all the now. Oh, my God. That's sad. It's not gonna happen. It's starting as soon as.
Being straight.
Without.
I bet it's.
The gas station. Yeah, it's like right as. It's like people like you would never. Yeah. We're doing it sometimes. Don't have eyes and box. So, yeah. If I just cry. So.
You can, I just.
Great. I can hear you guys. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you actually.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna mute again.
I can hear you as well. I'll be clear.
Useful.
Hmm.
No, no more results. Be sure. More. And it was so much. I just don't want it. It's just whatever. They just have it as a brand. There's just. Yours. It's close. So, yeah. They're saying. Yeah, I was at.
It's shows.
I was. Who's here? You're like making some.
I'm.
Make it bad. I was sure it gets. Four. I was. No, yeah. Yeah. Also have the, and the, the, this is somehow. The most, like, the. Like, home center. It was some. Do. Yeah. I wish it's in somehow. So, like, just like. We settle on the citizens. Thanks. And the good.
Yeah, it's a quiet side of it.
So, yeah, it's. And then. There's the logic.
Yeah, it's. Yeah, cause when you look at the, wow. Yeah.
Awesome. Okay. We're starting to go toward. Yeah. All right. Um, good evening. I'd like to call this meeting, uh, to order for the Region fifteen Board of Education for November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the. City's. To the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mission of Region fifteen, a collaborative community committed to excellence, is to educate every student to be productive, ethical, and engaged in a global society through proven and innovative learning experiences, supported by a strong community whose decision-making is based on the best interest of all students. Um, and just before we start everything too, I just wanna let everyone know that, um, Ms. Rogers and Mr. Olson are remotely connected to the meeting by Zoom. Um. And before we go with our student representatives, we had a presentation, um, and that's going to be led by Ms. O'Toole for our upcoming student performance, um, of a play.
Hello.
I'm Ms. O'Toole. Um, so we're gonna show you a snippet of our play that we call The Greek. It's really two one-act plays, um, both using the Greek chorus. One is Antigone Now, so it's a more streamlined version of Antigone, a little bit modernized as well. And the other is Copalamb. It's based off of an Aesop Bible. And I'm gonna introduce Sarah Sutton, our assistant director, who is gonna introduce the rest of our cast. We'll see.
So, but over there is Izzy Weiner. She. She plays Antigone, and then next to her is Danny Martino. And they, and then Sam Feg and Neelain, and they are the fate. And then we have Addison Evans, who plays Ismene, and then we have John, I mean Xavier, who plays John. He's there. Thanks.
Life ain't easy. Life ain't fair. Girls gotta fight for a rifle share. What you gonna do when the chips are down? Now that the chips are down. What you gonna do when the chips are down? Now that the chips are down. Help yourselves. Help the rest. Even the one who loves you best. What you gonna do when the chips are down? Now that the chips are down. What you gonna do when the chips are down? Now that the chips are down. Oh, my aching heart. What you gonna do when the chips are down? Now that the chips are down. And the first shall be first. The last shall be last. That's your right to have them. You get nice in the back. Nobody's righteous. Nobody's wrong. Nobody's innocent. Now that the chips are down. Now that the, now that the, now that the, now that the, now that the chips are down.
Polynices was my brother. I loved him and I buried him. It's not so hard to understand.
How should we? You put the city at risk and this time you pay the penalty. I could be your uncle. King. They're.
Give me the penalty too, uncle. I'm part of this.
Isley. Took you even when you had nowhere else to go. My wife loves you like a daughter. Think, Isley. Did you help her with that?
I didn't. Yes, ask my sister if I did. Liar. She refused when I begged her to help. It says nothing to do with you. Let me share your punishment, little one. No. Polynices knows who loved him. He just talked. You can't face that alone. I'm not alone. Listen, the whole family's cheering me on from the dead land. Little sister, my only one. I can't bear to lose you. Well, bear it. How? How? Close your eyes. Think of the sun between your shoulder blades pouring heat like butter down your back. And birds singing after three days of rain. Walking out barefoot at midnight to see the old moon cradling your arms. Yes. And how, at midnight, the heat of the road rises to the souls of my feet. You see? Choose life. You'll always choose life. But I, I choose death. My bags are packed and I'm on the road. Turn back, little one. Stay with me. Too late for turning. Polynices meeting me soon. We'll take my hands. We'll walk together to the earth until we find a river that blazes with fire but doesn't burn. See, he's waiting on the ferry. Down the far bank, daddy is waving and mama is calling us home.
They have washed their minds.
Suffering will do that to people, uncle.
Some people are. So. Ask you. Why are you doing this?
She's my sister.
Don't speak of her. She doesn't exist.
She doesn't exist.
Thank you so much. I hope you guys are able to come see. This is going to be the weekend after this coming Thanksgiving weekend, so, uh, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And we'd be so thrilled. Yeah, so thank you so much.
Thank you for having me.
Just note that Ms. Cabalo has now joined the meeting as well, joined a little while ago. I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention. So now we'll get to the student representatives, um, Ms. Victoria Thelflow and Ms. Glazier Murphy.
All right, so for some of the events going around here at Pom Rock, we have that class twenty-twenty-eight is doing a fundraiser called the Double Good Fundraiser. And it's basically running through this week and just today, we've raised a little under two thousand dollars with the goal of five thousand dollars. And for, um, Student Council, they're planning the, um, Winter Spirit Week and they're focusing on having engagement with fundraisers locally and, um, boosting school spirit and community. And then also at Pom Rock in the past week, and especially during our last Palm Senate meeting, and to kind of summarize what Pom Rock Senate is, it's like a group of student leaders, um, who are the representatives for their various clubs and organizations. And it's a group that meets about once a month, and we try to bring all the clubs together to promote our school initiatives. And so during this last meeting, we have put our focus on how to connect, um, as a school and create a positive school culture. So we came up with ideas, including fun halftime, um, performances during basketball games, um, a fun, interactive, uh, activity called the Portrait of PHS. And then also our Spirit Weekdays, um, that we hope can become more than just dressing up, but something that, um, creates a school-wide positive community. And then as we progress further into the school year, we hope that this goal of ours becomes something that we can achieve and celebrate on.
Thank you so much. It's nice to hear about the Senate and what you've been doing. Very interesting. Any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, next we have the Region fifteen five-year capital plan. It's a present that's given to Mr. Joe Mertesacker.
So we're gonna walk you through, um, our upcoming five-year capital plan and then sprinkle in or maybe a few things that we've accomplished together over the last couple of years. So as I think we announced, uh, recently, this project is officially closed. We have, uh, the two remaining, uh, windows, the bow window, bay windows, uh, on the pool deck are scheduled to be replaced. They're finally in. They're back orders. So they're finally in. We're just trying to schedule around the board season so it doesn't disrupt, uh, any, uh, practice for them or pack, but that is the last piece and then it can be done.
All right.
Uh, some of this I think board members have already seen, but it's a good reminder of the community. We have nine buildings, supposed to seven hundred square, thousand square feet of space. Smallest building being about twenty-one thousand and the largest two thirty-seven. And then we auction, there's two different buckets that we'll talk about tonight. The operating capital is what's in our reoccurring budget. Uh, and that's approved every year. And then the second bucket and a half is we have the capital reserve, then that's shifting or transitioning to the educational expense. That's the non-reoccurring. That allows us to carry money, uh, year to year. Uh, we can deposit, make deposits in there, but they cannot exceed two percent of our annual budget. We get as close as that and that the board or the community would like us to do. Uh, some disclaimers, uh, this for planning purposes. The numbers that we're gonna show you are estimates. Uh, we prioritize safety and mechanicals. Uh, some of this we'll have to work on how we fund some of these projects. We wanna put them on your radar. Um, and then obviously we update this annually or sometimes more frequently as we should be available. Uh, this piece here. It's the window out of the way. Is, um, really a list of some of the non-fonded items that we've done, so. All of this right there, but, um, these all came out of one of those two buckets, either the reserve account or the operating, uh, but did not come out of the box. The phone system upgrade, the energy upgrades we've done, every school's been, uh, touched in some way, shape, or form. Some photos of, uh, projects that happened over this past summer. Again, one of those buckets that we talked about, the gym floor at Rochambeau. Um, that was taken down to Fairwood and resurfaced. That is the hallway at Central Office, nothing out of E.T. Uh, that is the pavement project that's happening, that happened over the summer, um, and that space on the right used to be a locker bay. Um, and it is now a meeting space here at Pom Rock High School. Uh, this is our current, uh, balance of each of these or where we started. The operating fund balance, that would be allocated as of July one. That's come down some. Uh, the capital reserve account, educational expense account tonight, um, the agenda is to transfer the year-end balance. The educational expense balance is assumes that four oh five, that, uh, should we do that tonight? So when we talk about the projects that come after this slide, these are the three buckets that we're talking about plumbing. Uh, so here's kind of, um, a base list of the capital budget for, uh, this year and what's been completed already or is in process. So we go through here, uh, that locker bay that you just saw, the gym that you just saw, uh, slim there. The wall to you. And all of these were in the, uh, budget for this year. We have several planning studies underway. The one obviously that we spent the most time on is the building project study. Um, however, here at the high school, we're looking at upgrading the science labs that are all original or close to original. Uh, the HVAC units that sit on the roof that we talked about in several, uh, different presentations. Uh, Long Meadow, the parking lot, and that will be the first roofing project, so that is underway, uh, along with the potential to add solar. We're gonna replace the roof at Long Meadow. That's a good time to add solar to the project. Um, this is the water line that we've been talking about for a while. Uh, they're actually pretty far along in that study. Under development, so we talked about a construction bond. This primary piece will be the new school construction. The kind of pieces that are coming into focus now, uh, I'll talk a little more about it tonight, but last board meeting, we talked about the sewer line at Gainfield. Uh, whether or not we move forward with a building project, uh, we think that we should, uh, do a sewer line study and get some costs. Uh, if we replace the building, we're gonna need to put a sewer line in. If for any reason we choose not to replace Gainfield, we still think we should away from septic and, and, uh, attached to that. Uh, the science labs, I believe last year we toured the middle schools and talked about the science labs there, um, and the science labs at the high school. Uh, the challenge with the science labs, and I'll talk in a second about the turf field, is both of those projects are not inexpensive. Uh, at the same time, they don't hit a threshold. When you go to bond something, there's a lot of, uh, legwork in getting bond quotes and the bond attorney and referendums. Um, and it doesn't make financial sense and you lose some efficiencies if there's, say, two or three million dollar bonds. So it makes more sense to tack them on to a bottom that we're going out with. So one of the things that we wanna point in front of you is at least the conversation that should we move forward with the school construction bond? There's an economy of scale. We're putting other projects in that bond. It doesn't mean we have to do them right away. It doesn't mean that you're gonna execute the bond right away, but when you do the referendum, doesn't mean that we're not. But when you do the referendum, if you put these all in there, then it means it's one referendum, uh, that can be bundled. And should you go to bond for these projects, you get those economies of scale. Uh, so the, the three things, the three science labs, one, uh, at Rochambeau, that would be new, one at Memorial, that would be new. And the renovation of the ones at the high school, we do not currently have formal pricing on that, but, um, should board think that it's worthwhile, we think we should get some pricing. And then circulate, circulating for, uh, several years now is the amount of pressure that's put on the turf field here at the high school. It's, there's pressure by our own, uh, teams. The spring is a very tough time to practice in New England and grass fields become muddy and unusable quickly. Um, and there's a lot of demand for the turf field, both, um, here for our sports teams and, uh, a lot of the community is forced to travel outside. Uh, so our thought would be this is an opportune time to put a second turf field on the campus at the high school. Uh, this is not about replacing the one that we have. That is in the five-year plan and we have it. Whatever, I'll get to it in a second. The roofing's, uh, cycle ends in replacing the turf field that we currently own. It'll be end of life. Um, this would be, uh, adding a second.
Uh, the Memorial Middle School in Rochambeau, do they have science labs now or?
They do. Uh, they're, both, both schools are short science labs. Um, and they're, even the ones they have are, uh, like a couple of them are in classrooms that they're kind of neat, new labs, but they're not. Or it wouldn't be science labs if the way the high school labs are, like, they wouldn't have gas or burners or things like that, but they would have water in them. Uh, in the past, you've spoken about, uh, when we did the ten million dollar, eleven million dollar parent bond, that it was, um, likely that we should be considering a more regular project bonding scheme. Um, so I understand your point that, you know, there's efficiencies that's hacking on, but like not every bond will give, you know, ten million or ninety or whatever, hundred million bond. So what is the threshold? I understand it's not a legal threshold, but a kind of a personal preference. What do you see as like? This would be the minimum you'd wanna go out to bond for.
How, like four million?
Yeah, five, five, ten million. Anything smaller, the issuance cost just get expensive. Cause the issuance costs are almost the same or how it's sized of bond is. So usually five million or so.
Yeah, I know you don't have a price, but what's the cost of a turf field?
So this has been a little bit of a conversation and I'm hesitant to throw numbers out.
Okay, then no. Well, I tell you don't.
Truth for a million, at least.
So, um, you mentioned, and I remember that the, our first existing turf field is in the five-year plan. Remind me, is that five years from now or four years or?
Yeah.
And if we were to do this, um, bond in May twenty-twenty-six, would we be able to break ground on a new turf field as soon as the summer or would that take time to, as far as like planning? I guess what I'm, what I'm fishing for is it seems like it would be, um, very difficult to overlap those projects, that, I mean, we should have a turf field available while we have the turf field that's being worked on.
You're trying a new field this summer or if it went out or?
Yeah, if it went out.
I think planning would be, wouldn't be enough time, like right now.
That's the answer, I.
I mean, the long metal roof now, we're drawing it right now and actually should get finalized, that's by early, actually two, two weeks or so. So that turf would have to be pretty well in the pipeline.
And the life of a turf field is ten?
Ten, fifteen years.
Fifteen years.
It's gotten better, um, but.
I think, uh, so, yeah, I guess my, what I would wanna understand about, like, the project plan of this is how close are they together? Um, and I, I think what I'd be worried about in terms of long-term planning is, you know, what if we had to replace them both at the same time? You know, if it's ten to fifteen years, we've, we've done them pretty close together, um, long-term.
Yeah.
You know, how do we, how do we do a maintenance site? How do we, you know, ensure that there's a maintenance cycle so that we're not running a risk that they're both online at the same time?
And challenge this cycle too is the track will probably be done with it, where last cycle just the turf was done. So this will have to be more than likely track resurfacing with turf.
That's on the curve.
Yeah, current. Yeah, which would.
That's where you get into like, when you, you say what's, what's the cost, you know, like, you probably can't do it less for less than two million and you could probably spend as much as you could imagine to, you know, the sky's the limit on, on where you wanna go with that, but, you know, somewhere in that two to six, let's say, um, is kind of where we're thinking. Uh, and then, okay, so if you did this summer of twenty-seven and replace the other field, uh, again, the replacement's a little faster than it installed, you know, uh, but you're still probably like a good two years probably in between those two.
Mm-hmm.
This field, the, um, turf fields get evaluated and certified every year, uh, or every other year.
Every year.
Uh, and then they give you kind of like how our wear is and like, so you, you, they say ten to fifteen years, that means, you know, you could get sixteen years out of it, you know?
I mean, I, even if we could do them, you know, if we could plan that they were eight years, seven years apart or eight years apart, like, there may, there may still be a possibility they would both be in trouble at the same time.
Sure.
But I guess, um, I, I guess that's just something I'm thinking about is, uh, practically, how long does it take to, to do these projects?
So the short answer, right, we know that installation is longer and more complicated than replacement. Uh, and, you know, there's efficiencies as far as like the equipment to maintain a turf field, the knowledge, the food that's all at the high school already.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, there's some, again, just multiple economies of scale.
Mm-hmm.
So you didn't necessarily come up with like project plans and pricing estimates. Before we started going down that path, I just wanted to put it out here and say, is this fighting off more than we can chew? Is it an opportune time? You know, is it the kind of thing where you wanna do it a separate bond two years from now? Uh, we're open to any of that. I just wanted to get some.
I, I guess one thing that I would like to know, um, maybe that answer is obvious, but I would like to know if it's either town. I, I guess one thing that I would like to know, maybe that answer is obvious, but I would like to know if either town is interested in doing a turf field project.
On their own?
Yes, because.
I could just tell you, Middlebury went through a whole thing with the turf field.
Well, that was an ex.
No, it was.
That was the town.
It wasn't, town wasn't gonna build it, they were gonna basically give it to a company, and they would build it, that never happened.
It, it just seems to me that the town would have more flexibility in terms of, I mean, acquisition, potentially. You know, very, very good turf field, that people, it would be maybe open, I understand we're talking about existing property, sorry. But I, I would want to see, you know, what town's vision is, before we commit to that project, but I'd be interested in. Because I, I think, you know, I, obviously there, there are people advocating for this. I, I think it's, it's not just a question for us and it's not just a question for the towns.
What I'm seeing on that slide is they're somewhat correlated. What I'm, what I'm seeing on that slide is that they're correlated in a way because you're thinking about individual projects or bond collectively. Because they can't stand on their own to individually, correct? So, I totally hear what you said, I think we should evaluate town level, but in the same regard, I don't want it to, I don't wanna miss an opportunity to update the science labs. And that's the flip side of that coin, because how would that ultimately be funded and repaired? The other question that I have, and this may be a silly question. You talking about this type of bond and what this could look like, this is not involved in referendum, or is it?
It does.
Then can we talk about that? Because that's my, you know, when we start talking about PES, GES, start talking about this, would it be one collective? And then if it is grouped together, if the op, if the cost of the new construction is exceeded, goes higher than it was estimated. To the point where the science lab or the turf field cannot be done. How, like how is that managed? I just wanna make sure, like, I think this in my mind is going back to, like, we really need that conversation with the attorney. I think that was one of the suggestions some weeks ago about like, what does it mean when we start thinking about referendum and what that could look like? Because I think all of these things are excellent, but we also had significant conversations at our last meeting about the price. Full, run of the day, places, locations, so when we group it all together, to me it makes logical sense. One vote, we get it all on paper, but I am concerned about adding more millions.
Yeah.
And putting other projects that can't, like, we need some, we need a decision on PES, GES eventually. And if the costs do go higher, then how do we manage that?
You'd have cost estimates or change order percentages that are else built into the projects, and they're very, by that point, they're, they're well betted out as far as they do X percentage of change orders above. What, so if it's, it's a, let's say fifty, fifty million dollar school, they allocate ten percent change orders, it's, it's, they, they all get executed.
Right, but what I'm saying, so let's say it's fifty million dollars, right, but we find out that the school needs fifty million dollars and we committed a referendum to spend another four or five million dollars on turf fields and labs. Can't, and we have no more money, how does that get managed?
You'd have to go back out for bonding again, which is.
Couple of answers, one is you could go back out for a ref, go back to referendum and ask for more. What happens more often than not is you change, like, you start to.
Offer my concern projects.
Well, or so.
Or amenities.
Or what you do is you just start to, you start to look at the school and say, this is gonna come off in the bill and then we have to go and we're gonna add this back.
And this is what makes me nervous. I love the idea of a turf field, I love the idea of labs, but to me this comes down to really good estimates and planning.
And this is true, no matter what happened to the school, you know?
But taking into account even inflation costs, the, what am I gonna say, rebate? Reversing it, thank you, because to me that, that's where kind of the rubber hits the road and, and I think that there's a lot of interest in the turf field, there should be, right? There's a lot of interest for labs and there should be, but we also know we have this building project, so I think we just have to really do this smart. And make sure that we are very transparent and if, and if something is at risk, what I'm hearing is, we have to do it all, but other things may be scaled back in order to be able to do it all.
So they'd be in different buckets, right, so you wouldn't say, we're not gonna do the science labs because the school project went over. Like what has happened, and I, I don't share this because it's scary, that, I just want, like, like some school districts have said, we're gonna no longer, we're gonna no longer air push somewhat, recommend that we, but like that's what they've done, to say that's a cost that we pulled out. If you do the school just as a standalone referendum and no other project, like that's still scenario. And that's still the, the, the conversation happening, what happens if? One of the pieces that, you know, I think we've talked some about, the advantage of building new versus renovated. Because you, you have fewer variables to control, and once you start renovating, you don't know what you're gonna find, right? But if you build new, you get those estimates, you get costs, you get bids where you can say, this is what we budgeted, vendor, you have to stick with it. You know, you build in some of those escalation costs, again, building new also shortens the timeframe, so cost escalators and those kinds of things. Yeah, I mean, or, there's going to be, those are some of the biggest challenges that you face. Whether you do these as three separate projects, or you do them as one project altogether, it would be one project, it'd be one referendum.
Except if, if let's say the interest of the town was high and the town wanted to fund that, then it would be potentially two questions on a single referendum. I just wanna be careful about.
It was a town project, it'd be a town, town question.
Right, it'd be a town question, I mean, yeah.
And I, I wouldn't see, I mean, if, same, and I don't, those are fact, if Middlebury wanted to turf field, I would think they'd do their own, they wouldn't wanna do it with the board.
No, we're not suggesting.
No, that's what she meant, that's what I meant. I would wanna make sure before we take on that project, that it has been shopped to both communities as, you know.
My take on this is, is the school, excuse me, the new schools are in need. The, the labs probably need, I think, the turf field to want. You know, we've gotten by without second turf field for a long, long time. You know, I think we should be prioritizing on schools, and then maybe the labs, I don't say on turf field.
I think, so, before getting into a, a, a discussion of whether we need them or not, I think what I heard from Josh and what he was saying, and hopefully this is like people near me, we're having a little trouble with the live stream right now. Do, does the board wanna further explore what the cost of those items are gonna be? Like, I think that's what I heard Josh asking, like, do we wanna get a more, a clear number on the turf field, an additional turf field or the science labs?
You don't have to answer that right now.
The science labs are, there, there is, that, that is pointing in progress for science labs, you don't process them.
Because the, the science labs, for example, if you don't, well, I wanna put this on your radar so you can think about it. But we don't have to make any decisions tonight, the science labs, for example, are part of our five-year, so that if we didn't hold them into a bond, you'd still, you'd still find a way to do them, but it might be spread out over five years, might be one lab at a time, or, you know, it's not that we wouldn't do it. The turf field's a little different, again, funding, how we fund it would be a conversation. We're gonna, just, we'll, we'll keep working on the live stream, we are recording this and the webinar side is, so it's just if you're trying to watch this on YouTube, there's some issue. We're streaming on YouTube right now, so.
Yeah, so I guess we don't have to decide, obviously it's a new discussion for the board, but if we wanted to embark on the second field cost, you'd have to at least, we have to embark on engaging architect to study to get a cost. So you can't go, we need a number obviously for, if we wanted to put it in May, again, I'm not saying we need to or not, but that would, so we'd have to do, at least.
And I think that would be helpful, if I do go back to the town, or each town, and have that estimate, I think that would be helpful.
Can you say that one more time, cause I couldn't hear you?
Sorry, yeah, I, I would value doing that estimate, because if, even if we were going to take it back to the town and shop it to the town as, you know, is this a project you're interested in? I think having that estimate is important. Steve and then Tom.
Just, is this the end, I had a question actually about the roofs on the schools, but we're gonna keep going, if that's on there, then.
Yeah.
And then my, I just, just say it now, all due respect, like, I, I don't wanna involve the towns. Like, it's just, I mean, I get that, and I know we don't have, but we just, it was important for the towns to have had a turf field already because it's difficult to schedule things. Like, the towns would have done it, I mean, we can, I guess we can, I, I just, I, I just wouldn't even bother, I just don't think it's gonna get anywhere. We do have a regime change in Southbury, so maybe it's worth just loading that, loading that biome. But I just think, just that opens up a whole can of worms about what, you know, the, the region is very specifically the combination of both towns. I think when you, once you start going to the individual towns to ask for things, it just, just complicates matters. So that was, I was, I was, I'll ask about the roofs after.
So, I thought, something that Sharon brought up was really interesting, and that was this idea of like, you know, we've, what happens if we have cost overruns? We don't have to look much further than our own repair bond, where the pool ended up eating up half the block, you know, that's not what we went out to the public with, no. So what happened was projects dropped off, so I would be very concerned if it was all one bond, starting with like the turf field, and then it's like, oh, you started digging and there's, you know, look what we found underneath this ground that hasn't been touched in fifty years, now it's gonna be double the cost. And now that's taking money out of a bond where we haven't gotten through our school, like, I'm not touching any school projects to pay for the, for the turf field. The thing I would be very interested to know, and I, I, we guess we'd have to talk to our bond attorney about this, is, could we, I'm with you on the science labs, I think that's an easy one to kind of roll into the new construction. For all the reasons Sharon and John mentioned, I think for the turf field, I wanna ask the bond attorney if we could split that question. And that second question, like, you know, or would you like a turf field, would have to be contingent on have the schools pass. Right, because that, we've said we're not gonna bond for just one, right? So talk to the bond attorney about how we could do a reliant or a contingent question. The reason I say this is that I, I, I'm very concerned about keeping the school portion of this clean. And if you, if you look around, bless you, if you look around in this state, referendums on turf fields have a very mixed history, right, you'll find some that have passed, but you'll find just as many if not more that have failed, right? And I don't know if adding a turf field to this would help our chances of passing the school or hurt our chances. Either do any of us, right, which means it's a variable that I'm uninterested in introducing to a school on. What I do know for sure is that if the school referendum question fails, and it's potentially because we included a turf field, I would be sick to my stomach. I would be sick to my stomach and say, why didn't we do this, we didn't have to do this? So I'm, I'm, it sounds like I'm not for it, I'm for it, you know, I question the timing. I do question if this is gonna be a distraction, because every minute we spend on it, like, we've just given you a lot of porn. Every minute you spend researching things on a turf field is a minute you could be spending getting answers for us on the school. Which has a lot of questions to answer in the next seven meetings of this board, where the referendum question has, we have seven meetings regularly. And we have a budget to pass in between there. So I worry about the distraction, I worry that we are jeopardizing passing the schools by bundling it. But I'm all for putting this out in front of the public, I just, I don't want to have it be a, an omnibus yes or no. I wanna give people the opportunity, if they feel strongly that they're not into the turf field, that it doesn't have to sink their vote for the schools, they should be able to look this.
I would just ask a very quick, let's just go question, which is just, is it possible to like prioritize, you know, like, we, we're doing the schools first, the turf field, if we have the money at the end, you know, basically that we don't touch that money until, which is gonna put it on the timeline of the other field probably, but is it possible to actually like triage those things, like, from it?
Once you get bond authorization, you in theory have whatever timeline the board, the board feels to allocate the money, that's, that's, it's, it's having the authorization to borrow.
I understand, I guess I'm just procedurally frightened.
So I thought you were gonna say slightly different, I thought maybe what you were saying, so like maybe there's a question that says new school referendum, and then another question that sort of says, like an add-on, right? Like you, you know, you want the Caesar salad, would you like to add? Some labs, would you like to add some turf field, and then if the school doesn't pass, the rest of the stuff just doesn't, doesn't pass either.
I like.
That's what I thought you were, that's what I thought Tom was saying.
Yeah, no, that's, that's what I'm getting at, yeah, yeah, I, I think we've come too far on the schools over the last eighteen months to, to drop in at this stage, kind of a new thing. I wanna make sure we can stay focused on this track, and I'm all for putting this in front of folks, but I just don't, I don't wanna compromise what we've spent so much time on, on the other side right now. And we're good, like, we're good with whatever, what we didn't wanna do was it be March, say, oh, we can tag this up. You know, there aren't a lot of meetings left, we wanna give you as much me time, the way, we're gonna talk later tonight about some answers to the PES and GES project that we had. I have TechTons scheduled to come in December, and then really, again, as, as long as people are okay with it, in January, we'd like to start bringing like some potential referendum language. Bring the bond attorney, you can ask some of those questions, so that we can kind of keep moving this forward to hit that May referendum deadline. And I don't want this to be something that in May, we're like, oh, we could have done that, but it's too late now. If we wanna, this is too much, it's too complicated, however you wanna move, we just didn't wanna.
I know it says on that slide, it should shelter a field at PHS, and can't get, I think that the opportunity in my mind is you build a new school, you put in a turf field at that location. And I don't believe that that has been at all integrated or discussed in some of our conversations, and if it was, I missed it. But to me, that would be the best of both worlds, right? You build the new school and you plan to integrate that into the over, in architectural designing cost relative to that one location. Is that something that's been evaluated? I know we're having issues with location and property, I know that's a big component, but.
Yeah, so we have had that conversation, and it's a possibility, so that the challenges with that are that the high school athletic programs are the prominent users of the turf field. So putting one off-site, you have to transport students to that field for practice, again, not the end of the world, but it's far less convenient than being able to move practices up here.
Same thing with the town location.
Sure, well, the town location is even less because you wouldn't have primary access to.
So I just wanna make sure we're very careful with some of the narrative.
Yeah, and then the second challenge is that the equipment to maintain turf field all lives here at the high school, as does the knowledge from the custodians here. Having it off-site means that we'd have to move that equipment, which we don't have to, we have to either rent the trucks, there's special like, 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 zero-turn lawnmower kind of equipment. You'd have to, you'd have to, we don't have a pickup truck, the trailer to move it, so we'd have to either rent that or buy that, and our custodians would be the ones at the high school to train, you could train others. So it's a, it's not insurmountable, but the fact that like the, the maintenance and prior use are here, and we have fields already here that we could just replace. You could build it into an elementary school, it would not count for reimbursement, so the field would not be reversible. And that's at least according in TechTons experience, we've had the conversation with them.
But either way, it wouldn't be reversible, it's only just.
For athletics at, at, you know, new schools, their fields, I would assume would be much smaller than something you put in a high school.
Yeah, it would be like, I mean, again, we could redesign and put in like a full-size soccer field if you wanted to make that a competition field, like, that's something that we could try to work into the plans. The, the challenge really is that the, the prominent use of the turf fields here are our teams. And it would mean we have to write transportation of high school students, really just, you couldn't practice at two-thirty at an elementary school, a high school, you know? So the, the use of that field, the town is a different piece, because right now, of our, our, we give primary, primary access to our turf field, and any community use comes secondary. If it's a town field, that's gonna reverse, right, or potentially, we haven't asked the question, but the high school use is really just about the logistics of access to that. But, um, the high school use is really just about the logistics of access to that.
This is gonna be a long night.
Yeah, and, and lastly, just some of the work on the science labs.
Yeah.
Um, so it wouldn't even like fall.
Lastly, this is the only piece on the science labs. We talk about a lot and we talk about numbers. The reason why I really, we run, let's start laying out the high school labs, particularly the architect. Because they do range from like three, four hundred thousand to seven, eight hundred thousand, depending on where the need are, where the OSHA compliance is. That's why we wanted to get some of these projects at least more ready to go. It was like, if they go on the referendum or not, at least we'll know. We talked about numbers on where we are as far as some of those dollar values, the middle school labs too. Which can make, might not be astronomical dollars from the work they do, but at least having like real numbers, real cost estimates against them, uh, we help with that.
One last question for you.
Yeah.
Are you thinking right now about lighting that turf field? So this conversation, I mean, you go either way, you know, if you light it, you gain more access to it, you know, you add more cost.
Sure.
Uh, you could also go to a field and light it. If that's an easy thing to, we're kind of within it and not yet the lights and add to it. This gets a little bit into what Steve was asking before. This is that cycle that we're in. And this is the replacement of the, the current turf that will come in summer of twenty nine is kind of where we're looking now. If it lasts longer, we should now.
Yeah, and the Long Meadow one is currently, um, here, drawing it as we speak, Long Meadow.
And the long booked turf project that you can look like summer of twenty seven, still have a little bit of a.
And there is reimburse.
Yeah, forty, forty-nine percent. I, I forget the last exact numbers. They changed a little bit, but it.
Oh, yeah, that's why it comes out of capital or comes out.
Well, it's, it's gonna come out of the current bond line. There's one point two million dollars in the bond line this year, which we've obviously not made the bond payment for. Because that bond was paid off. So those dollars will roll into the roof replacement cycle. Um, and then we'll, with, if it was two million dollars, we'll get fifty percent back from state.
We're not gonna ask to bond for the roof.
No, we're not. It, because we thought attempting to bond more is getting more complicated. You have more bond that you'd be carrying. So the idea of this, this, this rolling cycle to get through all these roofing projects was kind of beneficial. Long Meadow being yours. It's your oldest roof, um, right this year. Um, so we'll go through some of the school, uh, schools one by one. And the one to three year for Long Meadow, uh, your, the gym floor, that is one of your, kind of your last oil-based gym floors, uh, so looking to refinish that. Carpeting, you have really millions of miles of carpeting in Long Meadow. Uh, we've done some tower placement, but I was gonna keep doing, going through that. The repaying and redesign of the parking lot at Long Meadow, there's a lot of parking issues there. We've looked at at least taking the front of, that, that front section. I forgot a fun fact. It was actually a silo, which is why the parking lot kind of flows around. At one point, there was a farm silo that sat where the current fly pole is, which I learned actually this year. So the reason why the parking lot kind of hooks around is there was actually a silo that was eventually had the, had a rip down and condemned. Uh, they built the parking lot around it. So, so we're looking at it, we have some options. There's a lot of parking to add, um, but not really ready to, you know, do a final design in that. A PA system upgrades, we've had a really great PA system vendor kind of rolling through a lot of replacements in those. The high school was completed last year, for example. Sidewalks, there's many miles of sidewalks around Long Meadow and we have a lot of old chipping concrete replaced a lot as we go. Playgrounds, it's, I feel like they run in cycles. Through the course of doing the Long Meadow playground, we did look at the preschool playground down back. Um, that is showing some signs of where we do think that's be somewhere on the horizon, um, in that like two to three-year window. Uh, that, that's a much smaller playground, a much smaller place gate, um, but that's definitely out there. Uh, the roof replacement at Long Meadow, uh, two point two million, like I said, there's a lot of solar credits that are still out there. So I'm kind of optimistic and kind of the net, the net overall impact to us. Um, so we're looking at some solar arrays and engineering studies on there. So it's gonna be a very cool project once it comes. Hopefully, I'm hoping, but I'd like to get the finance early, early December. Um, HVAC upgrades, all Long Meadows AC with all what is called R, R twenty-two, which is your old refrigerant. Um, your one point two million, there's additional cost above the one point two. Obviously, that's at least is, is a placeholder for the moment. Um, you would replace the carpeting at Long Meadow kind of forever, I feel like. Um, generator, there is the original generator of the building that does a lot of life safety equipment there. Um, about three hundred thousand dollars that, that is, you know, I, that kind of, that's in the six plus that's out there. The other discussion piece, which you're kind of see, we, we went through the stuff this year. It's somewhere, I think some decisions on some of the portables, um, both the lower section, there's two portals, there's six portals of Long Meadow. Four they're put in with the RF funds and the two lower ones are from the early nineties. So the idea of kind of what to do and we convert them to brick and mortar, um, or is there a way to do redistricting and kind of maybe not use those anymore? Uh, but you'll see that kind of through all the schools as we go through. A middle elementary school, um, floor replacement, we're looking at this, this coming summer to kind of replace the front entrance for it. Boyer, but there's a lot of additional there as well. Uh, HVAC, there's several units, um, going down the main hallway, the music and, and some of those rooms are sourced by older HVAC units. Uh, PA system upgrade in that school and also a possible clock upgrade as well. That school's on the roof replacement cycle, so that, that is on a three-year cycle on that, that roof, now the last of the three. Um, additional flooring. And the three to five, the outside, the brick and mortar, there's a lot of mortar issues inside that we continue to re-point on some of the fascias. So I do think there'll be some additional brickwork that'll have to be done, uh, throughout the time there. Playground repair and replacement, we put down the three to five-year marker. That is, that will be your oldest playground. You have to complete the Long Meadow pieces as well. Um, and again, not saying yay or nay, but just kind of out there on the radar. Um, also the portable classrooms at Middle Real Elementary, actually type of, there is one, not two out there. Um, that lower one is from the early nineties as well. We did a new HVAC unit in there, but again, an, an older classroom, uh, down the back of that school. Rochambeau, um, you know, floor replacement is always out there in that one to three-year bathroom upgrades. Your heating system upgrades, this summer we did kind of a pilot, uh, fifty-five thousand dollars with the cost of replacing the zone valves on all the unit heaters. So those valves actuate with the thermostat and the old system or method was to adjust the valves by hand. So you want more heat, call the study and turn the valve. So now we've actually have a, an, a actuator system on a trouble computer. It's kind of fifty-five thousand wing. Um, it is very pricey to get through all of those, um, you're two hundred thousand dollars plus to start replacing some of those, uh, thermostat systems. But that does become a modern system where the thermostat actually has a, a swing tent where the teacher can adjust it three degrees up or down. So it's kind of, it's, it's really a very nice system, the way it works. Uh, the gym section on that roof is three hundred fifty thousand dollars. There, that is showing some age on that front section. Uh, we're gonna evaluate that further. We've some patching on it this summer. Uh, the science labs, as we said, the study's underway for those. Parking lot at Rochambeau, there's definitely a lot of signs of wear and cracking there, set or replacement. The main barely roof replacement, that is somewhere out in the twenty thirty-one, I believe the architect put on that. So that is a very large expansive roof up on Rochambeau. Um, that's a, that was to be out there on the radar for another roof. Roof or lots of.
So the Rochambeau roof, that's not on the cycle.
It's not, it's, it's not.
It's a fix plus, I'm talking.
Yeah, that's, that's six plus. That'd be kind of, when we finish the cycle with the turf field, then you come to Rochambeau. Um, give or take, but yeah, that is a, that is a lo- large expansive flat roof that runs across that, that.
But we think we have a solid five years.
Yeah, we've got time. Um, you know, not tons, but you got time. Uh, it's, it's patchable. Uh, we did learn one thing through the central office, um, roof on the backside. We did that about five years ago. And it was just so spidered, you couldn't really patch, but these do have some seams and they're, they're, they're pretty serviceable, so, um, all in all, the whole.
Some of these times are, you need to get them on your radar. It doesn't mean that, you know, six years, we might make a ten.
Or six and a half.
Nice question.
Yeah.
Um, you had mentioned the possibility of using solar on LMES roofs. I know there's a lot of panels in the. And we have them in other schools. What's the, what's the return on that investment? I'm just curious.
Yeah, about sixty, about fifty to sixty thousand dollars a year. Um, right now, we're, we're, that, those are what's called PPAs, a power purchase agreement. So the district does not own the panels. We buy the, we buy the power, the panels generate. So right now, I think Long Meadows array, we buy it at eight cents a kilowatt off the panel. Current ever source rate is about twelve cents, so actually the eight cents is a big savings. And Rochambeau is about eight and a half cents or so, give or take. So the, they're actually paying dividends now because the, the energy prices have swung up considerably. Um, so they are, they are working. We would look at possibly an owned array. Um, I was actually talking to our energy consultant too. There's actually, I lean up different people that are even most invest in your solar arrays. So, um, we're gonna bring some options forward on that, but we'll definitely.
When we talk about the pricing, it's the cost to do it. It's not taking into consideration any of the offset, correct?
Correct, yeah. And there's also, if you go to school construction and bundle the solar with the roof. The school construction will pay for a portion of the roof array as well. So there's, there's a lot of credits there. So that's why I wanted to, um, kind of shake that down.
Just to be clear, when we do new roofs, we think we should put the solar. We're not very likely to take it up anymore. Real estate, that's why.
Yeah, we're not, yeah. No more.
We could do a turf field.
Yeah, could be a turf field. Memorial Middle School, um, you know, uh, floor replacement is definitely in that, that one to three-year cycle. The boiler replacements, we did a natural gas upgrade there, so that it's not urgent on those. They're, they're in okay shape. There will be some efficiencies there and we may look at like some, uh, additional energy credits if they are available to do or boiler upgrades there. Um, the roof is, is out on that cycle. Um, that would be your second roof to do, um, uh, at Memorial. That will be in twenty twenty-eight, no, twenty twenty-seven. Uh, HVAC upgrades, you have a number of, uh, older rooftop units up there. There, it will be in need of service. And obviously the science lab study, which is current under, underway as well there. Um, parking lot, you do have a lot of spidering in, 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 uh, in both the front and the back lot out there as well. Uh, sidewalks, Memorial has this really like expansive front sidewalk section, which I feel like every day there's a chunk that cracks off the side. We have to continue to repatch that. Um, and, uh, oops, typo, sorry, there's no year six. No, 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 uh, no year six roof replacement.
And another type too, because the sidewalks are forty-five dollars.
Oh.
Well, we get it up to forty-five.
No, fast enough. The, uh, uh, so yes, that's Memorial. Uh, the high school, um, I know Mr. Marx always loves to talk about HVAC stuff, uh, but we are, we are definitely concerned too about kind of what sits above our head. Uh, I do feel like though we're kind of at least getting some handle on some of the costs up there. The larger five units, we've not done an exhaustive study yet on. Uh, what you can't see is inside the building, there is, there is multiple fenders that kind of go across through the, the rear section. Um, there's eight units that go across the back section. Those are about five hundred fifty thousand, seven hundred fifty thousand each, and there's kind of eight of those units. Um, the large main units, we do think are sort of that million, a million and a half dollars. The good news is they're serviceable today. R twenty-two is old. We did have a compressor fail on one of the larger ones. Uh, it was about a twenty thousand dollar repair. Um, but at least in the moment, they're serviceable. They are old, their, the R twenty-two is end of life. We definitely need to address them. Um, but we are looking at, as I said, actually the Wednesday, the unit towards the back of the building that was the science lab, that's coming off. They're gonna put down our fifty-five thousand. And, um, in the capital for next year is the exact cousin to it. They went up there both in ninety-six. We'll take the front one off for fifty-five thousand as well. Um, and we'll look at, look at doing, um, those are getting on the system on that, the ones that we're looking at up there, what's called a rooftop fired unit, which fired by hot water.
So basically, all of them up there are about the same age.
They are, they are very stageable. Yes, they're, they're all kind of sprinkled around and right about that, uh, that late nineties vintage, give or take. Um, with some, um, the auditorium unit, which we're currently just finishing up the cost estimates on now, which are about half a million dollars. Um, that, that I believe was from the eighties somewhere. It's over there. But yes, lots of good, but I mean, we're, we're definitely, we know a lot more than we knew, I feel like, last year about what's up there at least. Um, the one to three year, um, we're looking at doing another locker bay this summer, a conversion on that. Um, those HVAC units, like I said, there is kind of eight of the, called the midsize units. Those are about six hundred thousand or so apiece up there. Um, that's, that's out there in that one to three. And again, not saying they're getting done in the three, but I think it's on the radar for that. Flooring replacement abatement, there's all the red tile at the high school, the glue underneath that it is, is asbestos. So if you do any work, it's fairly fine walking all day long. Obviously, we do any work too, it has to be dealt with. Um, so if you want to get rid of the red tile, they kind of have to do the, the tenting like with the central office, that gets pricey. HVAC work, the science labs, uh, the study's underway. We're looking at doing a security camera upgrade as well up here. There is, there is some, some dollars out there to kind of begin to upgrade the system that's already here. Um, also as part of this too, which is in the one to three year, we have looked at, there is a locker bay, the locker rooms across from the pool. Um, we're looking at the idea, they're kind of used for storage. We're looking at the idea of opening up more to kind of almost like an athletic trainer area too. Um, not on here, but, but kind of on the radar as far as, there's basically a lot of walls and we kind of take the walls down. We can actually kind of make a decent, uh, training space in there for the athletic trainer. So that's on there for the high school. The turf and the, the turf and the tracker replacement, I mean, I think a million and a half, two and a half million is, is a reasonable number. But again, need a good hard cost estimate on that, um, to get through that more. The parking lot sections, we do a lot of puddle patching. Um, they're holding together, but there is, as you guys know, there's a lot, awful lot of, of, of the hot tar that's part of the cracks every year up there. The main, the five main, uh, HVAC units at the high school, um, I do hope to get a better study around those, um, probably in the spring. And the classroom hallway door placement, it's, it's kind of a, it's a different thing, but if you look at our current, current ones, doors are pretty beat up. Uh, yes, they function, yes, they close. The lock mechanisms are all good. Um, the problem is that heavy veneer can't really be sanded due to what's inside the doors. Um, so if you wanted to do any work on them, you kind of have to be replacing them. Most modern schools have gone to like a more, like a, almost similar to the finish you see here, like, like a lighter wood. You know, as the architect was doing the science labs and you tour these, you know. Like to modernize the high school is gonna be on the board. To, to do a renovate to new would be like, we're joking, like a ten, a ten-year phase to renovate the high school out as a new high school someday. So I think we're just keep looking at kind of this, you know, repair bond chipping away, uh, through the high school. It's a good building, it seems a little bit of, you know, little TLC here and there, I think really does make it look nice. And the locker base do look amazing. The kids are using them all the time and it just looks super modern with a little bit of work.
How did the, uh, high school parking lot hold up for the construction, the sidewalk area?
Yeah, it's, it's okay. We did a little bit, we did a little, we did a little concrete patching over there, but yeah, all, all that held up well. And the contrary, did replace, um, that one sidewalk that they beat up pretty bad. Um, yeah, it, it, it has held up well. Yeah. And our central office, um, you know, it, 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 I joke with Justin, it's, it's not a place I, I've always put money in the seven buildings before I put it down our place. Um, but you know, we did do the main hallway, replaced that. We are looking at some options about doing some of the, uh, carpet abatement. And the main contractor, possibly the finance office as well. Um, there's nine by nine tile on it with some pretty, um, dilapidated carpeting on top of that. Uh, we're looking at some options there. The lower level, the HVAC system, the problem with the current heating system, as we were just talking about, uh, a while ago. In order to get the first floor, sorry, you get the basement to seven degrees, you have to take the first floor to eighty degrees because there's really no thermostat to balance it too. Um, so we're looking at kind of additional heat pump, uh, to put into that main heating space down the basement for forty-five. It would help us balance the building a lot better. Um, also too, we have one of our, we do have one, um, maintenance vehicle that is driven by our, our maintenance supervisor. Um, that is getting on in years, well over a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles on it. Um, it does get used day in and day out, so that's, that is out on the replacement radar. Um, I do think the building will need additional heating, uh, work done to it over time. It's a very old system. And the window replacements are just, um, very old and very brittle, a lot of single pane with old storm windows. So again, not committing, but you know, depending on where the journey takes, I said, I need to keep looking at a lot of those pieces.
Replace one pane.
Well, we did. The superintendent replaced one pane. Yes, one.
All by himself.
He has two or three stitches to prove. So there is that out there, um. And we did take some pictures. I, I don't want to forget these and I know Josh said, well, you, you know, I keep these like I do because I never want to forget the old tennis courts. I, I never, I just. Yeah, I, I can't forget the old tennis courts and that had to remember it always. And the, you know, the color room too. Um, and actually that picture's actually a little old because the one, uh, Perkins paid for another stove on the other side. But you know, never, kind of never forget what the, all the great work we've done here is aboard. I, I do think it is, um, it is, it is quite amazing to see what's happened. And, and, and the time we've spent together. The portal classrooms, I, I do want to leave that out there as a thing. Um, I think we've done, we actually just did air sampling recently in the, in the Pomper Lake Elementary ones. Um, and I think they're just, they're, they're out there. They're, they're, they're solid, they're watertight, but they're, they're definitely on years. Uh, but then again, if we do work on game field, then, uh, Pomper Lake Elementary, that'll, that'll knock off a lot of them, so, um, that will.
I think I said this earlier.
Yeah.
But I know Pomper Lake Elementary, you're referring to the four and the period.
It's really, it's really not, no.
Other portable classes.
The, the, the fourth grade are this weird like.
Yeah.
Like prefab. Yeah, modular building things, yes. Actually, we were told that was the temporary gym at one point and they put walls inside of there or something, this, in the stories of the elders, I feel like, we hear.
That's a lot of work too.
Yeah, yeah, for the fourth grade, it's not.
I ran a school tour two years ago and one of the teachers was like, here's a chunk of wall.
Yeah, yeah, there, there is, there is some crack and plaster in those. It, it, it is a weird.
Structurally stable, but yes.
But yeah, it's, it's, it's a very weird assembly through it all.
The, the results of the air quality.
We just, I just got them about a couple hours, so the results, the results are okay. Yeah, there was, um, the, the, um. Yeah, the, the scoring was good. He's still doing evaluation, everything, but yeah, the initial. Yeah, the, the scoring was good. He's still doing evaluation, everything, but yeah, the initial, initial look was, their reports were. Um and obviously, the, the funding streams, there's, there is many. Um the capital plan, capital reserve, the educational expense. Um or bonding, the uh HVAC grants, the security grants, school construction grants. Uh state security, yes, we're also looking at now, I, I mentioned that finance, EverSource is a zero percent uh program, which they, they reinstituted up to a million dollars of borrowing for. Uh energy officials up here, which HVAC qualifies as, which is kind of neat. So maybe we went, look at doing one of those HVAC units in a zero percent finance through EverSource, um like five year or something like that, so. Um looking at those options as well, so.
Thank you. Any questions, any further questions?
We're talking about potentially asking for a bond for the new uh new turf field. Do we, and I know we've talked about these, if those things on the ceiling of this building, HVAC units go potentially have to close the school, like, I, it's your, like, I feel like. Is that more urgent?
There, there's, I wa- I want to stress is they're all, there's parts exist, they're old. But the compressors exist, the, the, the wrinkle to the R twenty two, which is the old refrigerator, which I talked to several now, uh heating and cooling contractors. The compressors are still being manufactured. So the wrinkle will be is when those compressors are no longer available, there'll be a bigger, kind of a bigger problem. But as of the moment, there is no plan to sunset R twenty two compressors. So that, that is, that is our, which again, we're not alone in this. A lot of buildings have, I'm sure the IBM building has a lot of R twenty two up in those, those rooms of that whole complex. So we're not alone in that world, so I do think that manufacturing timeframe does, does, does.
It's not a.
It's not imminent, it's not, yeah.
But it, and it's not like it's worth throwing tons of, tons of good money after bad, like I mean, it's, yeah.
We, we need to chip away, like the opportunities to get them off the roof, we're gonna take, like the, the unit to the science labs that was the fifty five thousand dollar unit. Like those from ninety six, it's, it's, it's leaving Wednesday. Um so you know, i- if we can take them out, we will. Um yeah.
So that I'm hearing then we're, so we're in a sense, we're, they're not as a big, I mean, you didn't have them, they're not as big a priority then.
They're a concern, but they're not, um I want to keep getting more evaluations, um to see what, what a better plan to take is up there.
And then my last question is just, um you, and you'd hinted at redistricting light. Um and I know we budgeted in the plans for the new schools, like I think it was like a hundred kids, was it, I think roughly? Shift over and um I guess that doesn't, that's not enough to sort of free up a portable.
I don't know that answer, so I think that some of the, the challenge with all of this plan, which is why there's disclaimers all over it, is there's a lot of moving parts, right? And so uh are, is there a way when we shift people, fifty, sixty students? How, what's the critical number that, you know, um and are there better ways to think some of this? You know, the other side of that is those portables were added at a time, you know, do, do we move it and then need to begin, you know? And so I think that's part of the, the conversation. Uh and it also depended, you know, one school versus two. Do we have to redistrict? If, if we do end up building two schools on our existing property, we don't need to redistrict the PES and GES, so like that's, you know, so like as we kind of tick through, what we're trying to do is give you the variables. We're trying to give you the different funding streams, the HVAC, the, the zero percent interest, that's how we did the gas at uh Gainfield. We did through it, you know, uh gas.
Rooftop at Gainfield is on that.
So you know, some of this is helping you see the, the landscape, and then as funding sources become available, uh you know, we'll pivot and try to take efficiencies uh anywhere we find.
The, the wrinkle, like for example, Middlebury Elementary's portable, like that, I don't see a way that that's going to go anywhere. And to rebuild that as another portable would be kind of short sighted, but to build it as a brick structure will be, you know, millions. Um to do that, again, would you do one store, look at kind of a double story version? I don't know, you know, that's, that's a. Um you know, seeing the ones at Memorial, we've got three out there. And again, the idea to look at a, a different edition of Memorial and make that a brick addition, again, these are much further than, we're talking before the, just a two school discussion and getting through that.
They're repairable, they're safe, they're solid, they're watertight, uh you know, and uh and to do everything out here, I could do the math and add all, but it's unlikely that we're gonna put out a hundred and fifty million dollar font to fix everything here and then just fail. You know, like, it's not how, it's just not how it's gonna work. Uh and if we did all that, there's probably like another leg, like, I mean, this is, we have, again, almost a billion square feet of space. Like this is an ongoing piece. We do for, again, I, I'll also say this, when I got here, you had no five year plan. You had almost no capital reserves, you had no structure to do this, like we, we are beginning to position ourselves to, to, to do all of these projects. And so I just, you know, I don't want to under um value what the board has done in the last six or seven years to even be in a position to have this conversation. So while it seems overwhelming at times, uh Mr. Ortiz, no big economy for being overly optimistic. None of these problems do I feel are insurmountable or that we are not moving in a direction that allows us to address them, so um yeah.
I'm gonna go back to solar panels. Recognizing that the solar panels may be added onto LMES, not knowing the lifespan, the life, the life cycle of the solar panels. Would there be any evaluation if the existing ones can be removed with the new ones being added to bring back that recreational space to students, given the fact that the field situation is limited?
The current ones were leased for twenty five years.
And when is that up?
Twenty years from now. They were, they were. Almost paying for Josh guy. Basically, I mean, give or take, they were. Could they, could he move to the roof of Long Meadow? I don't know the answer. That would be across the board, have to incur.
No, no, I was just thinking, after end of their life cycle, you know, and to set the money, like bring the field back and put on.
Cut down an awful lot of trees in the process, so yeah.
It might have been, it might have been twenty sixteen, so they might be almost ten years, but.
I, I put them in there COVID.
Yeah.
They went at like twenty, twenty or twenty one, because Middlebury yelled at me for the trees. Yeah, it's only one let it pass.
So I just wanted to say, uh in, in preparation for tonight, I went back and I looked at some of the prior presentations. And I'll give you both your kudos, like, most of the stuff that's on there has been done, right? There's not a lot that has fallen off. The timing sometimes doesn't quite line up, but again, there's a certain folly in projecting five years out. Um so I uh, I'm appreciative of the work that goes into this, putting things on, on our radar. Um it gives me confidence that even some of the stuff we're talking about tonight, like the board decides they want to move forward with the turf field, but now's not the right time. Like I'm confident we'll find a way to get it done, because the track record has been such that, you know, I, I don't think it'll be an issue. But I appreciate you. I know this is a lot of work, uh and I appreciate you guys taking the time to do this up here, Chris.
And I hope so the process would keep getting, like I said, someone said, get more shovel ready to projects, like the science labs. And just have better numbers around some of the big ticket stuff. That, that's kind of what I'm kind of excited about some of the projects, at least studies that are going to close out, like the labs. Because it is, we meet with the teachers and that's a really great conversation, how they want those labs to lay out and what to look like. So again, given something we can't do today, but we still have an idea to say, they cost this much, I have some idea where you're kind of shooting to.
All right, thank you. Um next, may I have a motion for approval of the November tenth, twenty twenty five regular meeting of the Board of Education minutes? Oh, okay, sorry. Shannon, do you have something to say?
I, I did a while ago. I just, I was like, I didn't want to interrupt anyone, and then I was trying to comment after John about kind of the towns in the turf field, and I, I think that, you know, Josh and some other people said it, you know, articulated it well before. Because, right, like us busing, the turf field is really about the students at our high school, right? It's about our players that sit there comparable also to other towns, right? We're the only high school um or the district, I think, in the state, um based on the survey that was done. That doesn't have a second turf field for its high school athletes. So, you know, yes, I think the town should also put one in. Middlebury was a unique situation. I don't think that got voted down because it was a turf field. It got voted down because it was going to be gated and guarded, and residents wouldn't be allowed to use it without a fee. So I just wanted to make sure that, right, I think there is a big want in these communities for extra space for all of the children to utilize. Um and it should be done at both the town and the school level.
Thank you, Shannon. Okay, so we'll um move on to the, the approval of the minutes. So can I have a motion for approval then November tenth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting of the Board of Education minutes?
Move that the board approved the November tenth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting of the Board of Education minutes.
Thank you, Steve. Any second? Second. Thank you, Sally. Um any questions, comments, anything?
Yes, I would like to comment. Um in preparing these minutes, um we are now getting some very heavy conversations about PES, GES projects. And it's never our intention for the minutes to read like a transcript. However, I personally felt that it was important to capture some of the discussion. We had a discussion over an hour last time about PSGES. So you're gonna see in these minutes somewhat of a more detailed uh recounting of what the board discussed, as opposed to just the line about, you know, the board had discussion. Um if you haven't had a chance to review them, uh please do. And maybe if the chair would have it, we could just take an extra minute or two to take a look. Um but.
Not having it.
Then let's move to a little. But moving forward, we're gonna try to do a bit more um of an in-depth recap uh as kind of the official record of proceedings. Um for this, to make sure it was objective, we did run the transcript of the video through two large language models. So they can tell us what they thought was, was the highlights, and then uh generate a kind of personal aspect. So please make uh sure you read that before we prove it, and if I misquoted you or anything, please take the time to correct it.
Any other questions or comments? Shannon, do you still have your hand raised? Or is that just?
Oh, sorry, no, let me lower it. I'm good.
All right. All right, so then I think we're gonna just do a roll call vote for this. So Shannon, what do you say?
Shannon Cavalo, aye.
Okay, Heather Rogers.
Heather Rogers, aye.
Jeff Olson.
Jeff Olson, aye.
Thank you. Go ahead, John.
John, John, you decide his side.
Sally Ramona, aye.
Sharon Attic, aye.
Heather Dwyer, aye.
Tom Marks, aye.
Marion Manso, aye.
Steve Seriani, aye.
Great, it carries, thank you. I have a motion for approval then November thirteenth minutes.
Move to approve then November thirteenth, two thousand twenty five special meeting of the Board of Education minutes.
Thank you, if you have a second. Thank you, John. Any questions or comments? Any questions or comments by them? Nope. All right, so do a roll call for this one too. Um Shannon Cavalo?
Shannon Cavalo, aye.
Heather Rogers?
Heather Rogers, aye.
Jeff Olson?
Jeff Olson, aye.
Sally Ramona, aye.
Sharon Attic abstained.
Heather Dwyer abstained, and I just noted that I was marked as present, but I'm absent.
Okay.
So we should have been that.
No, sorry, um.
But it's just notice, I mean, we'll amend it whenever.
Yeah, so we.
Hold up there.
Yeah, yeah.
Tom Marks, aye.
Marion Manso, aye.
Steve Seriani.
Yeah, okay. So Jennifer, did you get that? We just have to put Heather Dwyer as absent for the so, November thirteenth meeting, she was absent. All right. Next, we have information and proposals, policy and curriculum committee, Ms. Heather Dwyer.
Uh policy and curriculum met earlier this evening. Um we had a special guest, Dr. Jones from Pomperay High School to talk about um revised uh courses and the other changes to the course catalog um in the coming year. Um so stay tuned. Uh the committee did move some of those changes to come before the full board, hopefully at our next meeting. We um also have before you a second read of fifty one thirty one dot nine one one Connecticut school climate policy. Um this one, it, though it is a five thousand series policy, was not part of our five thousand policy review. This is a more of a reaction to um legislation. So this policy that you see before you, just to clarify, is this cave model policy that we pretty much, that was developed, you know, um because of this legislation and that is pretty much what is before you. We did not make any adjustments to it. And the committee will meet again December eight.
Any questions for Heather? All right, next we have finance facilities um report, Shannon Cavalo.
Sorry, I had to get myself off mute. So we ended up having to have a special meeting due to schedules on Wednesday, November nineteenth at six thirty. We discussed the EDM allocation by town, which um this year has almost a significant shift, well, almost a one percent shift back to Southbury from Middlebury based on enrollment as of October first. We also discussed the bond spending report on just where we were, and I know, I don't know if Joe has anything specific to add to that, but some of those items he talked about tonight, including the water line that we were still waiting for, and the HVAC units. Um and then just talking about the capital plan draft.
Any questions for Ms. Cavalo? No, all right, thank you. Um next, we have the superintendent's report, Superintendent Smith.
Share a couple things out. So I would encourage, just want to share for all of those that will be watching remotely. If you have not yet gone to our website, uh there's a lot of videos there of uh Veterans Day. Um that I wanted to share with you. This is uh MES of the Veterans. This one here, I just play a quick clip of the, the bagpipes. The bagpipes at Memorial. Right, so pretty cool. Uh so I would just, if you haven't looked, the fact that we're in school on Veterans Day, you know, I think some people are uh always question what that is. And um if you've been in our schools, if you've uh been able to participate or see any of the ceremonies, um we do a really nice job and just want to celebrate the veterans that came. Um it's getting harder to recruit veterans, so I appreciate them coming out and the work that our schools do um on Veterans Day. And then the second part of my update. To watch the sausage making. So in front of you, you have this presentation. Uh this is um from Tech Ton based on some of the questions we asked last time. Um and they will be here uh at our next meeting to go further detail, but in our attempt to just try to answer questions. So um this again is the GES campus. Uh a couple of things that we've been talking about, again, I think I mentioned it earlier tonight, that septic line. Um we're gonna pursue regardless of school construction decisions. Um the fact that the town is looking at replacing that one lane bridge is a, there's an opportunity cost there in that this road is going to be dug up anyway, um so running pipe and everything else. Um that's not going to be reimbursable. Um anything off um site will have. site will have to pay for, but we think long term, this cost is still gonna be cheaper than ever having to replace a septic system there. The other piece that is part of the conversation, we've not had this with Mr. Romeo, so if he's watching, apologies. Tecton feels that if there's a way for us to look at those classrooms in that portable, there are four classrooms there, it'll allow us to move construction a little bit further up and position the building. I don't know if that's possible or not based on space or who's in those classrooms.
They would hate that, right?
That's what said, that one again.
Right?
But it may create some, some opportunity, and you'll see this is again a soft display of where the building could be. Optimistic that when they come in December, you'll see some initial rendering or some ideas. This would be that portable, and if they could move give my cursor here. If they can move it ship forward. What I asked them to also do, there were some questions last time about temporary play space, so you'll see they added in the construction line and a couple of play areas. One thing that they recommended, and there's a couple of schools currently being built on the campus, so if board members wanna go and look at a school being built next to an operational school and see what that looks like, there's a couple opportunities not too far away for us to save a visit to. Yeah. This is kind of what the final GES could be with the faculty and that blue light, the light blue line is the the bus, oh, sorry, the red line is the bus, the blue line is the parrot pickup. So you'll see that it's a little longer and deeper than what we have now, which should help some of the traffic on Poverty Road. Again, the old field road being open and the two lane bridge should also provide some relief to some of the traffic issues. But that's what the kind of completed layout could look like. Two things on here, some stormwater runoff drainage that they would build in. Actually asked them about the theater space. This could be an outdoor theater space built into the slope there, into the hill.
Okay, have a theater.
Yeah. So we didn't have this last time, or a little more. So some kind of exciting news we started talking about. So that the light blue line is the construction access road. And this has some diagram of what the septic would look like. So these little dotted lines rows here, that is, the blue would be the new septic system, the pink is the current system. So Rochambeau has two kind of septic fields hanging off each side, and PES is in the front. And so that purple-blue, you know, you can see my cursor, but this area in here would be the new one, and that would be shared by both buildings. And then we could take the Rochambeau one offline, which is extremely old. Some things to they added some notes here in that the grade, so a changing grade, this is about a forty-foot grade at about a three and a half percent, that takes a thousand feet of road to offset in order to grade construction vehicles. You do think that that line it's certainly fine for cars, it could even potentially be buses after the school would be built. Here's what construction could look like at PES. You can see here they've been able to put the fencing behind the existing playgrounds. That green area at the top, right now is a parking area that we could turn into grass for the short period of build if we wanted to. And then this construction road would bring everything into the back of the school. On the top of that hill and the back of the Rochambeau property would be where we would store construction space, put parking for vendors, so that all of the kind of action would happen back behind the school and keep the school pretty isolated from like construction vehicles and everything else.
Excuse me, Josh, this is building on the same.
This would be building on the same site, yes. The next slide is starting to draw out what a final PES project could look like with that occupied blue area in the back being school, having two separate lots, so you could have that access road going to Hill come, and that could be your parent and visitor access, and then your bus loop would be in the front. Again, this bus loop would be long enough to remove most traffic from Main Street. Still get some really buses taking a left out of the school and buses taking a left into the school, create the traffic, but that is far, far less than what we have now and field space and everything else. And then they added some just summary. One of the questions that we've been pushing them on is to look at the cost of that access road. So they're looking at one point two to one point five based on the length, distance, all of that that is fully completed. We wouldn't pave it until after the school was built and all the construction materials was delivered and used. The other pieces to keep in mind here is that access road, we believe, and the septic system would qualify for reimbursement. We have to get a little bit of research on that. But it's on our property and connected to building schools. The other piece that's interesting is the removal of PES would also be reimbursable. So if we were to sell the PES property and the owner would have to tear down the school before renovate the school, which it has a lot of old building materials in there that would take and bring it up to code, but they'd have to get rid of the school. So there is, and if we're talking forty to sixty cents of the dollar, that's gonna be applied to the removal of the school as well, where if you were to sell the property, that would not be, we'd have to factor somehow that into the sale price. So there's some advantages. I know, like, they haven't ruled out looking at other spaces, but there's growing body of evidence that shows that there's some advantages to building both schools on the existing property, that we can control our own destiny of those. That's all I got for you on the quick update. Here, the last thing that I'll show you and then take some questions. So tonight, in front of you, you have draft of some Q and A questions. We started going through the plethora of information that is currently on our website and starting to put together a Q and A document. I gave you the first ten or eleven pages of that document. We have another, say, ten or eleven pages that we're working on, but you can we're probably looking to make that live, say, next week or so. If you're gonna read through and see if they make sense to you, or any feedback for them. And then kind of the sister to that is we are working on building a standalone construction website where this information will be displayed, and hopefully it's something that's a little easier to find. You know, I really, I think you've done a lot of work. There's a lot of presentations. Some of those presentations duplicate information, and if you're looking for a specific thing, it's hard to know where that is. So we're gonna try to do a better job in the not-too-distant future of displaying information. Hopefully that is easier and quicker for people to find based on kind of their point of entry, not having to relive a year and a half that we've been having this conversation.
If we were to build both schools on existing, well, both schools anywhere.
Yeah.
Would we be able to get the people to build them at the same time?
So one of the philosophies, that's a good question, right? So one of the questions is you could stagger them by about, you know, three to four months, so that you could actually use the same crews to do one school and then move the other. The challenge becomes if you make the exact same time, you limit the number of construction firms that are actually able to do kind of two simultaneous builds. And there's an advantage to kind of doing this kind of stagger approach.
But staggered, it's still close to each other, like, it's just going from one to the next.
So like, your subcontractors might do electrical in this building, and then next month we're gonna do the electrical in that building. You know, so they're, they're staggered, but close.
Just, I guess, no, or still to be determined. The access road is feasible for construction equipment.
Yes.
And yes, no, to be determined. The septic is, like, it's, that's gonna we go with this, septic will be new and it'll be proposed schools, and there's really no more questions, because you were talked about, maybe there might be issues pumping it up.
Yes, short answer.
Okay, thank you.
Recognizing that I bore a bust at the back of that property, has there been any consideration for potential noise, and if anything needs to be integrated into construction to offset that noise once the school is fully I just wanna make sure that that cost is baked into anything we're talking about.
I would say yes, but I would also encourage you to ask that question for the Tecton when they're here, if they have plenty of schools built with those kinds of things.
And maybe that this next question is for them, too. So on the the option for the PES, I, I see, you know, certainly the new school potentially could be built, and then the parking would be put in, but there's logistical issues, right? So I would wanna see at a phased approach, where would people be parking before that whole school is knocked down? So it's stuff like that, like, where would we have teachers? Where would we have families?
So that, I don't know if you can see in the front here, it says temporary parking. We would add in kind of a smaller parking lot, kind of at the bottom of the, like, lower.
The pink is which septic? The gold septic or the new?
The old, but I, it's funny.
Because I worry, like, that's a lot of weight on.
So I did ask that question, actually, same, and, and yes, for, that's fine, for parking there on top of the current septic.
And same thing with the access road and any work that you're doing there.
Yeah, you have good questions. Yeah, I appreciate them. Yeah.
You get copies down here.
We didn't get any.
Oh.
I have two.
Stephen Iren.
I've got a tiny little.
Thank you. Yeah.
There was a special.
Can we just sum them in in anticipation of Tecton? And I'm not anticipating that the question.
I think that's a good idea every time.
And even if it can just be added in the running list, I don't need every question to be talked to me about. I just wanna make sure that if there's any answer, then.
I think, I think actually if board members have questions for Tecton, it would be helpful to get them.
You can build them into those presentations.
Right. I mean, that doesn't mean that you can't ask new questions on the eighth, but anything that we could do to make it everything more efficient would be great. I really appreciate the effort on the question and answer. I love it. And again, like, so long, because this has been a long process and there's a lot of information. But I like how you have the questions that people have been asking us and on social media. So.
We'll put links in there if they want more, but this is for summer.
Just by this, it almost looks like you're leaning or we're leaning towards just building on the existing sites.
Well, I'm, I'm a vehicle for, right, like, so I'm, whatever you wanna do, I'm most conscious of the timeline to create a referendum question. And I do think there are other things for us to look at, but my question keeps coming back to why. And when we started this process, we started with why are we doing it? What do we need to do? And how do we get there? And I feel like we're trying to do due diligence and look at every option. And we're still doing that. But as we start to tick this off, there are more and more reasons that start to point at, at, and and I'm not sure everybody understands, and that's part of the process, but if we own the land as a region, if we choose not to use the PES site, we're gonna have to go to a referendum and ask to sell it, which we can do. That property has an existing large old school with a lot of problems that either a new buyer is gonna have to take down, or, and, and they're gonna want that back into the cost. And when we sell the property, the cost gets divided between the towns based on the ADM. So that doesn't go back to the district. We have to split it with the towns. And so, like, we have to buy a new property then. And again, all this stuff is possible, and we can go down all those paths. And if this wasn't a viable site, I would encourage us to do that. The more we dig into this, this becomes a more plausible, you know, option for us. And at some point, we're gonna have to decide, you know, we're gonna do this or we're gonna pursue something else.
And, and the most important point, too, is I keep on emphasizing, the feasibility study, their first option was a new, one new school, one big school on a new prop, on a new property, but they knew that that was not gonna be so easy to achieve. So the second option was to build the two schools on the existing property. The third option was exploring other sites. So while we're not bound by them, there is definitely weight.
Except you guys had your hand tied behind your back, so you had no idea on properties.
Right.
We were asking.
Which is why.
A recommendation.
Right.
And you, you know, so I, the work is great, I'm not, but I don't feel any obligation on the recommendation side. All the, like, the work leading up to that point, super valuable.
Yeah.
And now that we have actual data on viable lots, like, I think that weighs much more heavily than asking your opinion before you have the access to that information.
But I think the feasibility study also recognized, the committee recognized that it's easier to work with the properties that you have than trying to find a new property. I mean, aside from a big, a big property, but trying to find a new small property, then going through all the rigmarole of a referendum to buy it and then sell the other one. There, there was like that level of attention to their, their recommendation.
The renovation work was super helpful.
Yeah.
Like, that was pretty disqualifying after seeing the work you guys did on that.
Yeah. Got you.
A comment on the slides, I think it's important for people for it to be, look at these slides and have some type of slide notes as to some of the color coding and what they mean. And maybe that's clear on there, but it's not, because they're still very busy, and I just wanna make sure that that they're clear to people, pink versus blue septic, old versus new, that type of thing. One of the things that I'm keenly interested in, because ultimately, if we were to endorse this type of plan, it would literally be disruption to, to three schools, right? And so, so continuity of learning during construction is a significant factor that I would like to be addressed, talked through, to really understand the implications. And then the last thing, we always do, or typically do, what I call field trips. Right? We get to visit schools. I would love to actually go and walk this, either with Tecton or with the group, to understand exactly what it would look like based off of their schematics. I'm happy to get my money boots and my dirty clothes, but I kinda wanna see that.
Or other sites under construction.
Like these locations, to be like, this is where it would be.
Both cross-country trail.
Yeah, to me, I mean, and I'm not, it's just a recommendation, but for me, it would be very, very helpful, because I am very concerned about the logistics, particularly with PES and the middle school, and how that will work to schools under construction while school is in session.
Good question for next week, uh, next session of Tecton.
Keeping it up.
Yeah.
And then the last, and this might be a question for next week, too, but when do we sit down and, like, put some dates on the calendar? Like, because we could keep talking amongst ourselves, but at some point, we have to start moving this. And you're worried about the referendum date. I'm worried about, we have to have a plan in our heads early enough to start communicating it to the public, right? About the referendum, like, thirty days is not enough. Right? Right? So we have to know what we're doing at least sixty, ninety days ahead of that. Oh, yeah. So when I say referendum, what I'm thinking is, like, in March, we need to have the language for that referendum, which means, you know, in February, we have to just know what we're gonna do. Which means, you know, in January, you have to decide if you're gonna do something. And, you know, I do think that the the idea that we have two pieces of property that we can build and not have any impact to a school is not realistic, right? Like, I don't think we're gonna have that. So I do think questions like, how do you manage that? Do you wanna go visit a school that that's happening right now and go see what it looks like? Maybe talk to the principal of that school, and you can do those things to see, you know, what that's gonna look like. What's that?
I think that, that a field trip to some of this, and I also asked, you know, I think that, not to say a postmortem, but these are people who have lived it and gone through, and to have a Q and A session with people who have gone through that, I think that there's a lot of value in that, and whether it's an ability to tour a school or to have a conversation with people who've gone through it, I think could be very beneficial.
Yes, and I guess the question that I have for all of you is, we can December's a short, complicated month, you know, and, and January comes quickly, but we can look at some, some dates in January. You know, the, the schools, so, you know, Madison just opened their school. Chester's building one of their schools, very much like we're looking at here on the same. Chester's building one of their schools, very much like we're looking at here on the same campus close by. Chester's not that far away. Madison's a little more more of a drive. There's other schools. But those are two projects that we could go visit. Obviously, you know, days of the week, times, you know, I need to have some guidance, but we can start to.
I think there's definitely interest in that. And I think that that's gonna be have to maybe be offset by our normal school tours. Maybe. We're all veterans and they're veterans, but there's no new board members here. Um, so maybe that gets offset a little bit.
I would say on uh, you know, Sharon's saying about visiting the current sites, we should do that in December. Wait till January, it's gonna cover the snow.
Sure.
And you're not not gonna be able to see it anymore.
It's not.
It's way over twenty inches.
We can tour our schools whenever you want. Like, that's easy for us to control, you know, like that, that. Sure, when the. You know, I just need some some guidance and direction that's behind what I'm planning.
I just, I'm I'm curious if that's even possible, because we're not gonna go through briars and briar holes, right?
So so that that.
We're yourself.
We wagger.
You're gonna clear the access.
The the top side of that room, Shamo, you can walk.
Yeah, we uh, we did, they did open up, we did recently open up some of that trails.
It wouldn't be exactly this, but you'd kind of get a feel for it.
It's it's hard for me to visualize, like, how would this impact kids? Where would the the playground be? How would it, to me, from a visual perspective, I see it in the slide. I think being there is different and it might not meet everybody's needs. It's just an idea out there.
Wanted to tease something out, so and I agree, like, we should go and you get like the the broad level and have that idea. But. So we and then we, as we come back with some questions, right? We come back to the questions and we say to Tecton, like. You know, is this gonna be too much traffic going back? Whatever we come up with, or is it gonna be too loud? Like, at some point, we have to just trust the answers. So I think it's important to go to ask the questions. But I don't want to get caught up in like, I don't, you know, in in us making just decisions that should be made.
Totally agree, but I think that what it does arm us with information for asked questions.
Oh, for sure.
You know, and I think that that's. I trust the information that's being presented to me, but it's a different way of synthesizing the information and being able to speak to it.
Yeah, I I, yeah, I I I'm, we should do it. I just, I don't want to, don't want to micromanage the instruction.
Yeah, totally agree.
Yeah, and I mean, I think the other major question too is just like, what change at the decision we make? And so like, just to triage with our time. I I'm not sure that, I mean, I would love to go see it and everything, the the information gathering is great, but in terms of needing to make a decision. We sort of have what we have before us.
Right.
Yeah, to see.
So how about if like we aim for December eighth, not to make a vote, but to kind of get a pulse of where people are, to see if we make a decision pretty. Quickly to that, or if we need to have more information. Does that make sense? It's our next regular board meeting. So.
The week before that, there's something to go see it?
No, no, I'm not saying we're gonna do a vote on December eighth.
Okay.
Like, I'm I'm just trying to say, like, you know, someone said it, was it you, Tom, you said a timeline?
Yeah, I could say we should.
Yeah, so like, let's let's kind of firm up that timeline on the eighth. That's what I'm kind of trying to say.
Will be helpful for us. So if you don't have enough information to make it, so so I guess compromise. There there is, there is no easy answer. There is no answer that doesn't come with compromise. So I guess my question is, how can we be the best support for you? Like, what information, if there's information to, kind of Sally's point before, there's information that is going to, yes, we should, no, we shouldn't. There's outstanding things that are gonna move either one side or the other. Those are the kinds of things that would help us.
For me, it's the continuity of learning in those three schools a hundred percent. And 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 it's not only the continuity in the classroom, but risks or um, challenges that need to be mitigated. Again, may not change the overall decision if a school can or can't be built. But to me, that is a critical component. Sorry.
That's what I said. Does that change your vote on whether we're making a new school or not?
It would have a significant impact on my ability to support it if it's extremely disruptive for the length of the project across three different schools. And I'm all for a new school.
Do a new school.
Yeah.
Kind of a new school.
So yes, so I think what I would need is, I feel like, you know, obviously my phone is on Roxbury Road, but I, you know, is that even still a viable option? For everyone else? Like, is that, you know, is that still on the table? There was a request last week, I think, to look, you know, outside of Southbury Borders. Like, are we still asking for that? Is that still like, I mean, me personally, I don't, I don't need that, but like, I need the closure and. And I want you to come in in February and say, like, I found it. So like, when when we talk about deadlines, like, so, you know, we, I think we need to also. Either have that on or off the off the table. But in terms of locations, which seems to be the whole, like, I don't. Is is there anything else location-wise that's outstanding?
So I guess there there are um. At some point, we have to decide whether or not we want to continue to pursue. So the Roxbury Road one is not off the table. We have not made a formal request that is borne by the town, the town would have to lease it to us, whether that's by sale or. Gift. I don't know that answer, but.
I don't.
Well, again, I can't control our destiny there. So, but we we can certainly do an official ask. We have not officially asked the town. Uh, we have not officially gotten the phase one report back that says we can even ask the town. We have not closed the door on the lower half of uh, the IBM property. We have looked and Tecton's working on some pricing. That road is also over a thousand feet. That road. Is not all on our property. We have talked to um, Cavalry Church, that would have to sell us these property. So those things are there and kind of to to the point I was making to John before is, we can continue to pursue all that if there's merit for pursuing that. Uh, and if we need to answer questions and say we looked at them and they're not viable, uh, I I do, I guess the thing that. Is shit has shifted at least my perspectives. I always thought that PES would have a lot of logistics connected to building there. But there's also a lot of reasons from a cost standpoint, from a timeline standpoint, and controlling our own destiny standpoint, that this factors in our favor. We can postpone all of this, right? Like, there's no, we control, we control all this. We started this because those schools need repair. Uh, if you wanted to pivot and do one school on a referendum and put this out there. From Tom's point before, now you're adding variables into this uh, timelines, like. There isn't gonna be a zero impact of construction, right? Like, how do we mitigate it? How do we minimize it? But it's not gonna be zero. But that's true if we build next year or five years now, right? Like, that's always gonna be. And what is that gonna look like? So I mean, I think it's important for us to know what the variables are, for us to look at what the risks and challenges are. And have a plan on how to address them, but we probably won't be able to eliminate all of them.
No one's asking.
Yeah, no, I just.
I don't think anybody's asking for that, but I think minimizing the risk and understanding what's being done to offset the concern is valid.
I and and that's where I think you should talk to um, Tecton about it. And we should go visit some of the schools that's happening and see what they're doing.
Yeah, I'm very interested to see like an active construction, like how the students, how they play outside in spaces that are under construction and how. Parking and bus pickup and drop off works, like all of these things. But I agree with you, Jeff. Um, I always thought this would have some logistical concerns. I'm not a hundred percent, like, we'll work some of that out. You know, the picture you showed us, that's the kids playing in the field on Main Street.
Exactly.
Something like, that's something I have a question about. And it's somehow they. And they flattened out that slope on the front of the field, which is great. So I'd love to know more about how we're achieving that, if that's realistic, but like.
Well, and I think, let's answer some questions, state questions. So there is a barrier, like a space barrier.
Sidewalk.
Yeah, and and that's before the sidewalk. And would you have like some kind of like wall there? And I did ask some of those questions.
Yes, has that right on one eighty-eight?
Yeah.
Yeah. But it's on Main Street as opposed to one eighty-eight, right? You want a chain link fence on?
No, uh, like.
Put a white.
Stone, like a stone wall.
Yeah. So those are the kinds of things, like I, today, to answer Steve's question.
Yeah.
At this moment, I wouldn't want to close any doors until we meet with Tecton and understand some of these considerations, because there are gonna be. It is still tight.
Oh, sure.
We have an answer to every question.
Oh.
Um, but I think next week will go a long way to, I think, hopefully answering some of those questions and deciding can I close the doors.
Well, and I asked Tecton to put together like some drawings. Like, I do think, like, how do we help to visualize? And if this isn't gonna work, like, we, again, we have a children's door aim. So the more questions you ask, you know, the more uh, pieces that we can tie in. We can look at uh, early January, visit a construction school if that works for you.
So again, it kind of thinks, like, can we buy December eighth, like, have all that information? So then we can perhaps go, okay, like, we we we've got, we've got information on an access road on the IBM property, the Roxbury Road thing and the. Whatever else is available, you know, there's no more land, like, we officially just, we put all that to bed or not. But we make a decision and say, okay, this is the, this is the path forward. And and if we decide that the path forward is what is kind of what's here, then everything else after December eighth, so whether it's is is really. Are we gonna find something that just isn't like, just gonna blow the whole thing up? Like, I understand one or two people may not vote for something because of, there's too much, but like, can December eighth be like, we get all the information and we we. We have to start making decisions. Like, I just keep hearing, like, what I just got out last minute is that we're still gonna be peppered with information.
So I guess the question is, is when and how do we vote? So, I mean, like, so when we do the budget, we send a specific number to the referendum, right? And and I don't think in December or January, we're gonna be ready to send a number on on these schools. But we could reach some kind of a vote on, yes, we want to look forward and continue looking forward down this road of these two schools. On two existing properties. So it's not anything like written in stone and firm, like we, it's it's still to be determined on a final. Cost or arrangement or or whatever. But like, I I almost see that there's almost two board votes on this. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so like, kind of the final binding thing is that at some point, if you remember when we did the school improvement bond. You wrote the referendum language. We had the bond attorney here. He had that statement, you approved that statement that we sent to the town. To me, everything before that is, how do we get there? That's the part where we're gonna say to the town on the referendum, you're gonna put this language. That's kind of where we get locked in.
Yeah, down, down the value.
Yeah.
The cost of the project, eight doors, ten windows, you know, what kind of roof, all that kind of stuff will get locked in for referendum. If we could have the first vote, set the path, and then we do all our due diligence. And if it's February and we just discover that we can't do something. Then, you know, maybe it is, holy crap, can we go back to Roxbury Road? And you know what? If that blows the timeline up, it blows the timeline up, but we can't keep, we can't leave all that open. While we try to focus on.
So do you want me to?
Right, that's my opinion.
I want to ask, is if something is gonna move to an action on December eighth, a pre-read with proactive questions and answers needs to be sent out? Because it's a lot to be able to synthesize the information and vote on it. And I, that would be my one ask, whether or not you do it, but I just publicly want to say that there's tremendous value just in this Q and A document. In a pre-read in anticipation of any vote relative to what Tecton may be presenting.
So am I hearing from the board that you're interested in doing possible action on the eighth? As like a first preliminary direction vote? I don't know how I would phrase it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, should I put it on the agenda just to have it there? I don't want people to get upset. Okay, we'll put it on, yeah, I'll put it on the agenda.
I don't have to take it.
It's not a commitment or whatever. I'll I'll word, well, Josh and I can work together on wording something. If we're not ready, then we're not ready.
Yep.
Okay? Does that sound good?
Yes.
All right, go ahead, Heather.
I I mean, I just wanted to address the point that you brought up about disruption a little bit, because that was something. That I think came up in the feasibility study a lot. And I, so I just wanted to clarify. You know, there were a lot of reasons not to do renovation. For me, one of the major reasons not to do renovation was because. It's a longer project with a lot more disruption to the students in that area. So I think for me, that was one of the big reasons to look at. Can we build new buildings, same property, where we could have, you know, some separation of environments? And I'm sure it's not really perfect, you know, I'm sure there's things that would have to be mitigated, but I just wanted you to know that that was something that you said.
And I also want to be, make it very clear to the public, that we're always welcoming emails, we're, we definitely want public feedback. Um, if we vote on a path on the eighth, it doesn't mean that it's set in stone. We will continue to to um, want to have feedback from the public throughout this whole process. All right, any other questions?
This is super clear. Can, for the agenda, like, I feel like superintendent's report, seven B, G E S P is like, I feel like that's not really authentic. I mean, we're having discussions, like, can it just be a standing item? It's just number eight, G E S P is blank, which we're gonna be talking about all the time. We're discussing. This just could be like, oh, the Josh is gonna say.
Noticed. It's it's it's.
All right.
We're there, we're good. All right. Want to move on? Right. Oh, great. And next we have board member comments. Any comments from board members? Go ahead, Heather.
Just wanted to thank uh, the board and unity for continuing to support and skin professional development. Did go to the conference this Friday. Um, continues to be interesting and, you know, host variety of relevant topics. Um, and I just appreciate the opportunity to go again.
Any other comments? I have five. All right. Um, I'm gonna piggyback on what Heather Dwyer said. I thought the Cade Caps convention last week was fantastic. Um, was one of the um, better ones that I've gone to. Um, Miguel Cordona, the twelfth um, US Secretary of um, Education. Gave the keynote address and it was just, I was ready to run through a wall after I heard that guy talking. And he also congratulated us. Us for getting the Cabe Award. Um, and you know, because we had, we all had to stand. Um, and I just thought that was just really cool. That he congratulated all of us, um, of of those um, recipients of the the Cabe Award that we got. Um, I have the twenty twenty-five part that we put on our plaque. I definitely have the bug of trying to get um, the next level award. Um, and we're gonna start, we've registered that process at PNC, thinking about doing a stability policy. I think the best part about the Cade Caps convention are two things. One, it gives perspective, and the other is a professional development. Um, it's really interesting to hear what other board members talk about and what their concerns are. Um, because it gives perspective on what we're doing, um, and how we're doing. And I I could could not get over how many other board members are like. Really freaking out about their budgets, um, that they're in the hole already, um, and what their concerns are. And I'm there and like. You know, we don't have that kind of level of concern about like, holy cow, we're starting off. Nine million dollars in debt before we have even done our budget. Um, so with that kind of perspective, I felt grateful that we have a very responsible budget. And that we're, I'm not as panicked as some of the colleagues that we saw, um, we saw there. To that end, about professional development, um, and trying to go for that, you know, brass ring, um. You know, we had talked at the retreat about doing a second part of their retreat on professional development. Um, it was hard over the summer that my my board members were um, able to come. So um, Josh and I have been talking about it and we think that we'd like to do the other half of that retreat for professional development for the board. During one of our regular meetings. Um, so it's a Monday night. Um, so everyone has notice of the meetings. Um, so hopefully everyone will be there. I think that's really important. Um, or we can try to do one of the budget workshop dates. Um, because other board members had expressed that maybe there's too many budget workshops or whatever. Josh and I spoke about it. Um, we're gonna have Jennifer do a doodle poll and see um. Which meetings might work next year for us to do this professional development for our board. Um.
How long would that take? Because if we have a two-hour age, uh, board member meeting.
It would, it would take the place of the board meeting. So we would do a workshop, it would be, it would just be a workshop. So in lieu of a regular board meeting.
Okay.
Hopefully everyone will be able to come and we could have um, some of our own professional development. Yeah.
Two-hour meeting, then another two-hour.
Yeah, no, no. We're gonna get printout for one four-hour meeting, I hope. Um, so that that. So that doodle poll is coming um, your way. Um, and like I said, I would very much appreciate if everyone can be there. Um, whatever date that we settle on, um, everyone has notice of. um, whatever date that we settle on. Um, everyone has notice of our meeting dates for next year already. Um, and if, I have already talked to some board members already about um, topics that they would be interested in. If there's something that you're interested, let me know. I have an idea of what direction that we should go. This is comment, so. Um, just email me, let me know what your thoughts are um, on that. Um, my third comment, on the December eighth meeting, this is shaping up to be a doozy of a meeting. I'm gonna take our picture. Like, we need a picture for the website of the board. So hopefully you can all make it and, you know, get ready for a picture for our website. Um, also on the eighth, you've heard us talking about how um, Jeff from Tecton is gonna be in attendance. We're gonna be talking a lot about the Gainfield-Pomperog Elementary Study. We had slated that meeting to be for our student data analysis, so I think it's best to push that off to a later meeting, because I don't think you do both of those at the same time. There's more of a time is of the essence um, with the G E S P E S and um, for the student data, it's extremely important, but the more time we have, the more data we're gonna have, and it's not as time pressing as Gainfield-Pomperog Elementary um, discussion is. And then my fifth and final comment is that next week, Josh and I are meeting with the first selectmen, both of them, at separate dates. Just wanted to let the board know about that. Okay. Any other board member comments?
Good. Because I, I know I can't ask a question. My comment will be in anticipation of the doodle poll. If we could see a high-level agenda as well as who will be supporting the professional development, to me, that's very important to understand who would be delivering that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments? All right. Um, comments from citizens. The Board of Education will recognize citizens from Middlebury and Southbury, and citizens are asked to take their name, their town of residence, and to limit their comments to three minutes. Anyone? All right. There's no comments from citizens, so we will move on to regular business requiring board action. May I have a motion for approval of transfer of the end-of-year fund balance into the educational expense account? Anyone?
Move that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the Finance Committee, approve the year-end balance of four hundred and five thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars into the educational expense account as presented.
Thank you. Second, second by Sharon. Sorry, thank you. All right, Joe, can you explain this?
Yes, there's the remaining balance as we close out our audit funds uh, for year-end. As the board knows, we transferred the four sev- four hundred and seventeen thousand in about late May, early June into the ed expense account. And this is the second transfer as we close out our.
Okay, so e- explain that closing up the audit thing.
The, um, as the auditors close up our balances to their balances, and we make sure we assess, uh, both balances around the four hundred and nine thousand dollars. So they're, they're just in the process right now of, of printing out the final CAFRs, so we'll be ready to submit our audit.
Wonderful. Any other questions, go ahead, John?
Does this mean we had eight hundred thousand?
Correct, yeah. Four seventeen, the original was particularly because of the increase in the excess cost dollars that came in, as the board knows, kind of late, uh, late last year.
So did. Just want to make sure we didn't exceed the two percent.
Oh, no, we'd have to be at one point, about one point eight million.
Okay, Tom. So I just want to mention this, since this is the official end of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget here. To John's point, you know, this wasn't the total unused, you know, revenue that we collected. We also had the check from the state, so that was four seventeen.
Yes.
We also transferred three hundred ninety thousand dollars into summer projects.
Yes.
At the end of last year, which was surplus. And then we transferred seventy-five thousand during the budget cycle to pay down one-time expenses out of this year's budget. So if you add those four numbers together, it ends up with about one point three million dollars uh, in excess revenue we collected once we paid out all of our expenses. And I understand we had the, the check thing and that from the state, and that was, the special education was a bit of a, but even take that four hundred out, and you're still over eight hundred thousand in surplus. I bring it up because you might recall, that was a tense budget discussion, where some of us, um, I think Steve raised the motion, I supported it, asked for a two hundred thousand dollar reduction. Like, in hindsight, that seems reasonable now that we know what we know. My question is this, you know, we always, over the last couple of years, have approached our budget cycle with a very similar kind of uh, cycle of presentations and how we go about it. The presentation follows a, a certain path. I would like to suggest this year, we look back and do a deep dive.
Yep, this is a motion to transfer money into the fund.
Yes, this is a discussion about, because there's been some discussion about how much we have in excess.
Right.
It's more than that. So all I would say is, I will take the opportunity to say, I think we need a full accounting of the excess revenue. You know, in addition to what we're transferring tonight, I think it would be appropriate as part of our budget cycle to take a look at how we achieve that. And if that's a result the board is, is happy with.
Right. Any other comments or discussion? Go ahead, Heather.
We had discussed in PNC, and, and obviously that policy hasn't come with board yet, but um, when we put money into the educational expense account of assigning it to an operating code, this, this four hundred and five thousand, would it kind of be unassigned for the time being, or does it, or is it assigned to an operating code?
It can't, it right now be unassigned, but it could certainly be assigned to a tool code. So for example, if this was deemed uh, educational expense, capital reserve dollars, it can, it can live there. Um, as I kind of keep saying, that four seventeen lives in, in a, a educational expense, subcode certification. So the, this four oh nine, at the moment, would be kind of a, um, in a general area. Uh, but it certainly can be, we can bring it back to the board and, and put it in the buckets as the board sees fit, sure. Or you can go with there now. I mean, it's, it's with.
But for now, it's just gonna be unassigned.
Correct, at the moment. But we definitely can bucket those out. I think that the new policy that will be the direction of the funds coming out, that, which is, I think you've got those, those guarded throughout, which is a great thing. Um, so that'll, that'll be particularly.
Any other questions on the transfer? All right, so we will do a roll call vote. Um, Heather Rogers?
Heather Rogers, aye.
Thank you. Jeff Olson?
Jeff Olson, aye.
Shannon Cavalo?
Shannon Cavalo, aye.
Thank you.
John, you decide, aye.
Sally, one o'ye.
Sharon Attic, aye.
Heather Dwyer, aye.
Tom Marks, aye.
Mary Manzo, aye.
Steve Serianni, aye.
Great, great, it carries. We can now close the audit. Great.
Brings our reserves about two million dollars, which is capital and educational expense.
Um, next, may I have a motion for approval of policy five-one-three-one-point-nine-one-one Connecticut School Climate Policy?
Move that the Board of Education, upon recommendation from the Policy and Curriculum Committee, approve policy number five-one-three-one dot nine-one-one Connecticut School Climate Policy as presented.
Thank you, Heather.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Any um, discussion questions?
I have one question.
Go ahead, Sharon.
Yeah. Um, in item five, under bullying, and this was just, it just popped up in my head, I'm not questioning the language to a certain extent, but if only categorizes children in grades in grade twelve.
I have to adjourn.
So, but our schools have preschool. Could you just speak to how preschool plays into this policy? It's not necessarily about that one element, but it's about preschool in general, relative to this policy in our, in our schools.
So. I think the short answer is, you look to preschool, and especially a typical. When you're in a typical peer program, the idea of bullying of a three- and a four-year-old, um, isn't defined by the state. And so, uh, that is where our educators in there talk about kind of redirecting behavior, but.
But this climate policy, is it applicable to all elements? Students, teachers, when we talk about having a climate policy in our school and recognizing that we have students that are in preschool, I just want to be, oh, I just want clarity that this policy does also apply except for element five to the preschool.
Yeah, I mean, I think, yes.
But five is excluded.
I, I would say, if, if, if they needed, five could. You, you know, if, if we had some issue where, like, we needed to apply the bullying standard to our preschool program, there would be some discretion and conversation in that. But yeah, I mean, this is a school district policy. While the state mandated K twelve, it's because they can't mandate a pre-K twenty-two.
But what I'm hearing is, if there was behavior that required mitigation, all of those elements would be still in place, even though it was preschool.
Yeah.
Across the board. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, so we'll do the roll call again. Heather Rogers?
Heather Rogers, aye.
Jeff Olson?
Jeff Olson, aye.
Shannon Cavalo?
Shannon Cavalo, aye.
John, you decide, aye.
Sally, one o'ye.
Sharon Attic, aye. Heather Dwyer, aye.
Tom Marks, aye.
Mary Manzo, aye.
Steve Serianni, aye.
Great, it carries, thank you. Um, finally, may I have a motion for approval of the extension and amendment of the school bus transportation contract? Just go on the roll? Yep.
Move that the Board of Education approve the extension and amendment of the school bus transportation contract through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine as presented.
Thank you. You have a second?
Second.
Second by Sharon Attic. Any questions? Nope. Okay, so we'll put this to vote. Heather Rogers?
Heather Rogers, aye.
Jeff Olson?
Jeff Olson, aye.
Shannon Cavalo? Shannon?
Shannon Cavalo, aye.
Thank you.
John, you decide, aye.
Sally, one o'ye.
Sharon Attic, aye. Oh, Heather Dwyer, aye, I'm sorry.
Tom Marks, aye.
Mary Manzo, aye.
Steve Serianni, aye.
Thank you. It carries.
Mary, did you hear me?
Uh, yeah, Jeff?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I didn't hear you acknowledge it, so I wanted to make sure you heard me.
No, no, your vote was an aye, you're in.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. We're at announcement of future meeting dates, uh, Monday, December eighth. Um, Finance is meeting at Central Office at twelve. Also, Monday, December eighth, PNC meets at the High School Media Center at six thirty. And on Monday, December eighth, we have our next regular Board of Education meeting. At seven thirty, we're not going to do the data report. We're gonna uh, postpone that for a bit. Um, we are going to have a board picture. We're gonna date it. Um, we're gonna have our board elections, um, for positions, and we're gonna be discussing the G E S P E S um, study. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, Sally, second by John. All those in favor?
Uh, aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving.
I know.